Let's begin with a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Welcome to the January 29th, 2024 work session. My name is Kevin Cook. I serve as the chair. Joining me today, we have Commissioner Aaron Mays, Commissioner Bill Rippon, and then our county councillor Rich Eckert. This morning, our first item is an update from Ms. Thadani with the planning department. I'll turn it over to you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Joni Thadani, Director of the Planning Department, was asked to come in and give an update from Planning World today, and so wanted to do a few things in regards to what it is that we are doing. I don't have a PowerPoint. I don't have any specific presentation. I just have several topics that I wanted to go over so that we can give you a background and history of what's happening over in our office. And the first thing that I wanted to do was introduce Chadwick Barr, who is here with us today. Chadwick is our new zoning and floodplain manager, and he's been here since mid-December. I hit him with his first project as he walked in the door, which was our annual floodplain CRS report, and so we are getting ready to submit that. And he's been working hard on learning everything about floodplain in Shawnee County and how we, the things that we do to promote floodplain and safety and the floodplain insurance and our community rating system. And you actually will be seeing that on the consent agenda on Thursday because our report is due February 1st. Just as a little update to how that works, we joined the CRS program or the Community Rating System back in 2011. When you enter and when you get approved for the first time, typically you come in at a Class 9 rating, which gives the people who have to get floodplain insurance a 5% discount. As you do certain activities and as you promote floodplain safety and floodplain management, you can gain additional credits, and every year you submit various reports to the federal government, and then they review that and they determine where you stand with those credits, and then you can improve your standing. So a few years ago, we did that, and we were upgraded to a Class 9, which gives us a 10% discount. And so at this point, we're maintaining that Class 9 rating. We have to submit an annual report every year. Our reporting date goes from February 1 to February 1. They look at how many floodplain development permits that we've put out, if anybody is building homes within the floodplain. You have to do elevation certificates in those circumstances. They ask us questions about how many people contact our office about floodplain questions and what kind of information we give them. And then we also do promotional brochures that we have at various locations, including at the clerk's office, the elections office, the library, our own office, and then we maintain a website where all of the information is available as well. And so we gather all of those documents and work with other departments such as emergency management. We work closely with mapping and provide all of the information that we maintain as a county, and then we submit that for our review, and that will be due again on Thursday. So you'll see that just on the consent agenda. I do hope that as a part of this, as I have taken over this office and last year was working as the floodplain manager, and now that Chadwick is able to do that job, we're hoping that we can expand that program a little bit and see if we can't do some additional activities that can increase our points and how we can push that to get, you know, an additional class standing, go up to maybe a Class 10, get some additional discounts. In regards to wind and solar, that's probably our biggest project that we have going on right now. If you all recall, we had a couple of solar farms come through for a conditional use permit in May and June of '22, and as a part of that, you had to consider those for approval. And it was a difficult position to be in because we didn't have regulations that dictated what it was that we needed to do. We did those as a conditional use permit, and we put conditions on those solar farms, but we did so kind of on the fly. We figured out what would work best for our county and for those particular properties. One particular property on Auburn, there were some issues with the setbacks from a residence, and it wasn't exactly ideal in terms of us moving forward with that project and having plans set out and regulations that dictated what it was that we were supposed to do. So after that, both the Planning Commission and you as the Board of County Commissioners reached out and said, hey, why is it that we don't have more in regards to regulations on this? What can we do? So over the last year, we have gone through the process of doing research. We've investigated what other counties have been doing. We've monitored the progress in other counties because, not surprising, we aren't the only county that's going through this. There, you know, are circumstances going on in Osage County, Potawatomi County, Douglas County, recently in Johnson County. And so we have a whole lot of history of what has happened in other counties. And even more recently, actually, in Harvey County, they had been reviewing their regulations. And so we've been able to bounce off what other counties have done, look at the processes and see what is it that we need to do for Shawnee County? How does that fit within our county itself? We had multiple speakers coming to the Planning Commission and presenting information. Josh Spotty and his wife Kimberly put together a presentation, and he came at one of the meetings and presented. They represent the Kansas Energy Alliance and as a part of the National Energy Alliance, and so that gave us a perspective from, you know, the energy side of things. We also had Senator Mike Thompson come in and speak to us. He has been highly involved in energy projects from the legislative point of view, and so he was able to come in and give some input on his feedback on that. And that would equate to not just our county, but then statewide, how things have been affected statewide. Jeremy Goodwin from WIBW has come and spoken to us about the effects on radar. He's doing research currently on how it is that wind farms could affect the Doppler radar and their ability to give us warnings in case of tornadoes. And he has been doing nationwide searches about tornadoes that have hit and then looking to see if there are wind farms surrounding those and how that might have affected the radar that they were able to present. We've reached out and talked with the MTAA in regards to the airports. How is it that wind farms and solar farms might affect the airports and where they could or couldn't go? And so we've reached out to various entities. We've reached out to people to come speak to us. And then at our meeting in December, there was a motion from our Planning Commission to move forward with investigating a ban of wind farms and then a moratorium on solar farms. And so what that does is it doesn't institute an automatic ban. It doesn't institute an automatic moratorium. It just instructed me to move forward and with the proposal that we would ban wind farms in Shawnee County. And then they also were looking at doing, the first proposal was for a three-year moratorium on the solar farms, but they backed down and decided that one year would be sufficient. And so the next time we meet, most likely not until March, I don't think that we'll be prepared for this even at our February meeting, but in March, I will present a staff report that gives input from not only the Planning Department, but rounds up all of the information that we've obtained to date from various counties, other departments within the county, and putting our recommendation on that, on whether or not a ban for wind is the most appropriate move for Shawnee County. And then as a separate action, we will also present to them whether or not a moratorium is appropriate for solar farms. We have a whole lot of reason why wind may not be appropriate for Shawnee County. Things that we've looked at in particular are infrastructure, how it would affect our roads, bridges. Wind farms, when they haul in the equipment to bring them into the county and then to set them up, they bring in very large trucks. The pieces, as everybody is well aware of, a wind turbine are huge and take up a lot of space. It would also impact the farms. There is a great deal of concrete and infrastructure that has to go in for every single wind turbine that they put up. And when you do a wind farm, typically you're looking at multiple turbines over a few square miles. And then there could also be separation between each little farm, and there could be multiple farms throughout the county. We've looked at the, as I mentioned, the airports. It would really restrict where it is that a wind farm in Shawnee County could go because we do have two pretty significant airports here that have a distance that they don't want to see the height of those towers. They would interfere with airport activity. As I just mentioned with our floodplain, we have a significant amount of floodplain. Our encouragement to people is to not develop within the floodplain. And so while you could put up a wind turbine within the floodplain or near the floodplain, it doesn't mean that it's a good idea. You're changing the structure of the ground, the earth, how far you're digging down. You're replacing ground, and when you replace ground, then water finds another place to go. And so the less that we mess with our floodplain, the better. Other things that we've considered are noise, safety, and also, as many of you are probably aware, public input. We have had a lot of public coming to the meetings, reaching out to us who are against wind farms. We did a survey back in the fall, and we had what I would consider a really good response. We had almost 900 people respond to that. And in the grand scheme of things, you may think, well, in Shawnee County, 900 people isn't very many. But how many, how many times have you had 900 people show up to one of your meetings to give input onto things? Not very often. And so if we, if we think about hosting public forums where we would have people come and speak either to or for, for or against a wind farm or a solar farm, chances are is you're not going to have 900 people show up. You may have 50 people. You may have 40 people. And you may have 100. We just don't know what kind of response we would get at those public forums, but we did have 900 people respond to the survey. Now, that being said, 40-some percent of those people were in favor of wind farms. So we have to take that into consideration as well. There is some level of support, but public input is not the only thing we look at when we decide whether or not wind farms are appropriate for Shawnee County. And then with the solar moratorium, the request from the Planning Commission would be that we would look at putting that moratorium in place, giving us a little additional time to decide whether or not solar farms are going to be appropriate for Shawnee County. We are working on regulations, but in the grand scheme of things, if you have to write regulations from the start, whether you take them from other counties and kind of pick and pull what it is that is suitable for our county and put it together, it is going to take time. They are a little bit worried about whether or not we would have someone file an application for a solar farm while we're trying to put these regulations together. And then once that application has been filed, what our options are for deferring that. And so they have concern about their timing and their ability to consider something and have those rules in place. And so that will be heard and considered in probably our March meeting, which means then it would be coming to you guys either sometime in later March or in April for consideration on both the moratorium and the ban. Other big things that we're doing in the Planning Department, the, probably the biggest thing that we're working on right now is our permitting portal. As you're aware, we had taken out an RFP between IT, Planning Department, Public Works, We Department, Environmental Health. We did a group effort in putting this RFP together and getting a permitting portal that allows the public to come in and apply for their permits on our website instead of having to walk into the office. It allows our departments to work together over a, an electronic means versus sending emails or having people come in in person and having to send them upstairs to work with a different department. It'll allow us to track workflow better and cut down on paper and time for us as a whole. It's combining not only our permitting process, but also our document management process. We will be able to ensure that all documents from all projects that are going on between all of the various departments will be stored in one system. Not only do we have that up and moving forward, we're in the process of building it now. We have taken multiple meetings to discuss how it's going to look, how we're going to move forward. We have had one meeting where they've started building some of those forms into the system, and then we have another meeting coming up this, either this week, I think this Wednesday, on Wednesday, where we're going to continue that process and have additional forms being built. And it will take us a few months. Each of the departments will work one by one. We're hoping by summertime that we should have that portal up and running. Permit numbers are something else that I wanted to address. I know that we've discussed historically what permitting looks like in Shawnee County and how it's compared with other years. And I pulled, had Jolie from our office pull all of the numbers as of the end of the year so that we could compare year to date, and it looks like for 2023, our numbers were down just a little bit, which I guess in the grand scheme of things is not all that surprising. Not only have we seen inflation in terms of interest rates, but also the cost of materials. It actually wasn't a bad time for us to have fewer permits because we have been understaffed all year of 2023. But trust me when I say that it didn't feel like we weren't pushing out those permits on a daily and a weekly basis. In the, when you look at comparatively, actually, the single-family new was just a tad bit higher this year, but the costs of those were a little bit lower. So even though people are still building, they may not be building a house that's quite as expensive. They may not be putting a basement. They may, you know, they've, maybe instead of having a four-bedroom, they may do a three-bedroom. We have still seen those houses coming in, and we did have just a slightly higher number for single-family new. In regards to accessory buildings, though, and additions, it's, we were probably 30 or 40 permits lower on each of those, and also on swimming pools, about 10 lower than typical. And so in general, that means that our fees that have come in will be a little bit lower than the year before. If you think back, though, in regards to not only how much cheaper it was to build in '22 and in '21, also on top of that, our numbers were a little bit higher because we had been doing the pushpin violation with the Appraiser's Office where we were bringing all of the properties that were found back into compliance. And so when I look back at the numbers for '21, we had 40 penalties. '22, we had 43 penalties, and in '20, we had 61 penalties. So some of those building permits that we had within those years could sway our numbers a little bit because they were actually buildings that had been built in years past, not that year. And so in the grand scheme of things, I don't think that we're that far off. I think that as we see numbers with interest rates start to reduce a little bit and the cost and availability of supplies, that we should see those numbers at least maintain, if not go up within the next year. I don't necessarily have anything else in particular that I wanted to speak about. There are things that I can absolutely address if you have questions about a particular process or project that we have going. Other than that, I just wanted to ensure that you were up to speed with the wind and solar in particular because that will be coming to you in the next couple of months.
We could, I want to start with one that's maybe a little bit off, which is fireworks. Is there anything about our fireworks permitting that, I mean, now is January, so we're six months out from 4th of July, but is there anything we should be thinking about when it comes to fireworks or fireworks permitting?
Absolutely, and I'm glad that you brought this up because I forgot to write this on my list, although it was something that I wanted to bring up. If you go to our website, on our main homepage, the Planning Department homepage, right up at top, there's a red little icon, and it says fireworks stand applications are now available. They are up and ready for anybody who operates a fireworks stand to download their applications, to fill them out online. We have fillable PDFs that you can do from your computer. You can email that in. So yes, please go ahead and do your fireworks permits now. We want you to file them early, not late. We, it's difficult when we receive them after we've already processed all the others because we do have to get approval from not only Public Works, but the Sheriff's Department and my department, and then we have to bring them in front of you for approval by a certain deadline. And so we want to make sure that that all happens as early as possible. So we, this year, put the application out there right on our front homepage. It's ready to go for anybody who needs to fill out their fireworks application. So for any of you that have stands within your districts and you know that there have been, you know, delays historically, go ahead and reach out to your constituents and let them know that they're out there. And we will be sending out emails, but if email addresses have changed, we don't always get in touch with the people who come back year after year. And historically, the same applications come in every year. We have only one or two that maybe change within an annual year. The same people have been coming back year after year. So get your fireworks applications submitted. We can start processing them at any time.
Commissioner's question? Bill?
Yes. I've heard in counties north of us, they're looking at some very large solar farms. Have you heard anything about?
I don't know about any north of us. I know that Douglas County has had an application for a 1,000-acre solar farm, and that one actually has been in front of their Planning Commission, and it was voted on four to four. And so it goes to their Board of County Commissioners probably sooner than later here. I haven't seen the date that that will appear in front of their Board of County Commissioners, but it's, that one in particular has been very contentious. I think that with large-scale solar farms, what we look at is, in our area especially, agricultural land and whether or not a solar farm is the best used for prime ag land. And sometimes when you place a solar farm close to a substation, which is ideal so that you can transfer that energy without losing some of that as it travels further and further away from the substation, if you place it close to a substation, you may be putting it on prime ag land. And I think that that's part of the issue that Douglas County has seen is that they are having some issue with whether or not it will take up good farmland from their county. They do have very specific regulations that they have put into place. They went through this process of doing the regulations for their solar within the last couple of years, and they're in the process of doing their wind right now. And so the Planning Commission, from what I've read, really struggled because the application, for the most part, complied with the regulations. And so then, if it complies with your regulations, why do you turn it down? And I think that that's what they're fighting now is, you know, does it comply with the regulations? Do we have the ability to tell them no? And if so, what room do we have to do so?
Okay, say, say they put in a 1,000-acre solar farm. What about the transmission lines that take that power out? Is that, is that in turn to another planning issue, or is that something we have any say-so about?
Well, so yes and no. There are a couple of, and a lot of this is stuff that we've been learning as we've been processing, and I'm not an expert in this by any means, but there are a couple of different lines. You have GentI lines, and some of this may deal more with wind versus solar, but you in essence have the lines that transmit the power from the farm to the substation, which may be tie-in lines, and then you have the lines that are transmission lines that send it from the substation to other substations once it's joined the grid and then gets shipped out to wherever it may need to go. Because once you've joined the grid, it all combines into the same pool, and it can go anywhere. And so GentI lines are the lines that connect the farms to the substations to get it to the grid typically fall under the private entities. Those are not lines that are maintained by like EverGee or, you know, Big Grid. So those a lot of times take additional conditional use permit, or when we, when we do our regulations, we will be speaking to those tie-in lines and have to regulate those as well because those are private. They're not maintained under like the KCC. They're not a public utility. Those are just the lines that get them to the public utility so that then they can be spread out. And so transmission lines and the GentI lines are a little bit different.
Commissioner Mays?
Typically, solar farms are built next to substations, though. It's not like with wind energy, they're typically, they're out in the middle of nowhere, and they have to put up new transmission lines. But with solar, typically, there's not a need to do a long run of transmission.
Right. With the solar, it's, you typically try to keep it closer to the substations. But just so you know, there are also battery storage facilities that can go along with this as well, which is kind of a third component in the sense that you could have even a battery storage facility without a solar farm or a wind farm, but you can also have them close together to help take the solar or the wind, the energy that has been accumulated, and then have a place to hold it until it gets shipped off.
In my previous life, one of the arguments that was always made against the uses that we were trying to promulgate was you're going to take farmland away from this county, this state. And I would always point out that at any given moment, the federal government pays American farmers to not farm about 25 million acres a year.
They are in the CRP program.
What about battery storage? Is that something that needs to be addressed, too?
We will look at, we've been looking at battery storage as well. Right now, it's, there aren't a whole lot of battery storage facilities in the state of Kansas, but it is something that needs to be considered because even if we put regulations into place banning wind or even if we put regulations into place allowing wind or solar, it doesn't address the battery storage. Because as I mentioned, that's something that could be done on a separate level. You, I had inquired, because my original thought was, well, why would you have a battery storage facility if you have no wind or solar? And the answer that I have received from people from the Energy Alliance and attorneys that work with other developers have indicated that, in fact, you can put a battery storage facility about anywhere.
What do they look like? Is this?
It looks like a storage container. If you look at like a container that you see on the back of a truck or that you see people using in their yards for storage facility, it looks identical to that. And they're about the same size, height width, the difference being that typically when you do a storage facility, you end up with a lot of them all in one location. They can be stacked on top of each other. They can go several wide, multiple deep.
What about garden solar farms? Those are just small, like 20 acres or?
Typically, the garden ones, you're looking at, maybe even smaller than 20. So the two that we have approved would be considered garden solar. They're, each of the ones that we have are 1 megawatt. They're, you know, give or take on about 10 to 15 acres. Those are what would be deemed garden solar. So you have, I, the way I've seen it, kind of three different levels. You have the garden solar level, a mid-grade where you may have anywhere from 20 to maybe a couple hundred acres, and then you have the large-scale utility ones that are going to be more like 1,000, 1,500, 2,000 acres of. And when we think about also, just identify that when you think of 1,000 acres of solar farm, it's not going to be 1,000 acres of panels. You have to have space in between those panels for them to move. You have to be able to get trucks in to service stuff, and you have to have the storage facilities or the, you know, all the facilities that go around. So when you look at 1,000 acres, I think that the one in Douglas County, actual panels may be more like 600 acres out of that total. And so, but you still have to have that land space that is all a part of that specific project.
Does anybody graze livestock or anything like that in their solar farms?
With solar farms, it's a lot less likely because the solar farms that we see around here typically are all the panels that are side by side. From our understanding and research, there are panels out there that can be placed in specific locations and heights that do allow for some grazing around and under. There are also apparently solar panels that are more like a tower or a pole that comes straight up and down. So I think anything is possible. And in our consideration of both the wind and solar, I think this is something that you have to consider is that technology is going to continue to change. So what we're looking at right now for a wind turbine may not be what it looks like in five years, 10 years, 20 years. The technology for the pieces that go onto those solar farms or wind farms... The technology for the pieces that go onto those solar farms or wind farms change. And so if you do a ban now, technology could change and it could be something totally different in 10 years.
With a wind farm, you have, you might have some demolition or I mean replacements of blades. Where do they go now? Is there any recycling news or are they just?
My understanding is that there's a whole lot of people who believe that there are boneyards full of wind turbines out there. But from the understanding that we have received from those that are probably a little more closely associated with an energy alliance, that actually you can, you can recycle portions of it or it's not as bad as what some may lead you to believe. I would have to get additional information about exactly what they do with those turbines and the blades to build, to give you better information on that than I can. Because we've gotten to the point where we've been asked to look at doing a ban, we haven't really done any further development of regulations on supporting it because right now, our request has been to ban. And so it's not something that I've looked at in more detail.
Has anybody had to decommission a wind mill or a wind farm? Or they had to tear everything down and get the concrete out? Has that happened yet or is it?
I don't know about whether it's happened in Kansas, but absolutely. They, there are decommissionings that have happened. They have to build the, or, so the cement is massive in regards to width and depth. And then underground, it goes pretty deep underground. And so with the decommissioning, my understanding is that they take it down maybe five or six feet. They probably don't ever eliminate the full amount of concrete that goes underground. But they get it, just like a reclamation of gravel pit or, you know, you come in and you fill stuff in, you cover over the top and, or with a landfill, you cover over and you bring it back to the best that you can based on the circumstances. And then you can use that land again for farming or whatever. It may never be the same, but there is some level of decommissioning that can happen.
Okay, so when a person does road agreements for say a wind farm, you'd want to make sure that you're covered. Say they have to come back in with this big equipment to redo something that if they tear those roads up and have to replace everything, that's not just a one-time shot.
No, 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 no.
Anytime they have to come in and?
Right. We would do it similar to how we do our conditions for, again, I'm going to come back to a quarry where you can set a baseline. You know, before they start, you maybe have them do a traffic to impact study or a road analysis and determine what kind of level of harm that those trucks may do to a road. And then we can have them do reports and evaluations every year, every two years, however often it is. And then we can have an agreement in place where, you know, the roads are at this condition. And then after you're doing your work, you have to get, bring them back up to a certain level. So those are all things that are very important in regards to the research and the time that it takes to figure out what needs to happen if you were to approve a wind farm or a solar farm. Probably more so with the wind because of the large size of equipment. But we want to have those in place because if we approve a wind farm without having them in place, you don't get to come back and say, well, we've changed our minds. We want you to do this now. Those conditions need to be in place when you do the approval. And so those are all things that we have to put into a condition. And honestly, the, it's, the sky's kind of the limit at this stage. There are no regulations that tell us what we can and can't regulate with wind or solar. A little bit different than say, for instance, our communications towers that we have considered, the cell towers. There are federal regulations that tell us what we can and can't consider. It's very different with wind and solar. Those aren't in place at this point. And so you can put quite a number of conditions on a wind or a solar farm.
Commissioners, there might even be multiple haul routes to look at for a wind farm. You obviously have the turbine haul route, but you're also have the quarry haul route and you're going to have the concrete haul route, which could be three different routes. It's a good day to have a quarry located next to a new wind farm.
Other questions?
Yeah, I got some. I've actually had a couple of people contact me about the door-to-door rooftop solar folks. And my understanding is a lot of those are scams. Maybe not all of them, but some. Are we planning on putting any kind of regulations on that type of thing? I know they make a lot of promises to people. And, you know, unfortunately, I mean, I don't want to limit what people can do on their own homes and whatever too much. But at the same time, if there are folks going around selling a bill of goods, is there any kind of regulations that counties have put on that type of thing?
We don't at this stage, but it's not to say that we can't. And I think every county is different in regards to the level of regulation that they put on any one of these topics. We have not regulated at all the solar panels on a home. The most that we do is that they do have to apply for a building permit. And so anybody who decides to put solar on their home, you can either come in for an addition to your house, which the numbers that I was talking about earlier includes all of our solar panels. Because we, we do multiple a week that come in and ask for those permits. So if you put them on your house, you come in and you do an addition to your house. And if you put them as standalone next to a pool or your accessory building off to the side, then we do it as an accessory. We don't regulate what they look like. We don't regulate how tall they are other than as long as they fit within our height requirements as otherwise put forth in our zoning regulations. We, it's very similar to how we do any building. They come in with their plans. They have to sign off on our building code affidavit if it's applicable. They have to sign off on the soil erosion affidavit if it's applicable. They have to make sure that they have their entrance permit if needed. We evaluate them in all of those respects, but not the actual functionality of a solar panel. In some locations, they would have a requirement that if you're doing door-to-door sales, that you have to get a permit to do so. I think that's probably a little more popular in cities because you have more likelihood that people are going to go door-to-door in the city. However, we all know that Shawnee County is very dense and we have a lot of people who live in the county who are in subdivision-like areas. And so if we wanted to do something like that where they have to come in and get a permit to go do door-to-door sales, but we wouldn't be able to just do it for solar, we would need to do that across the board for anybody who does door-to-door sales for anything. And then we would have to have a violation and implementation process for which if people violate those, they can, someone can file a complaint or they can call us and check to see whether or not they've gotten their permit with our permitting portal. Maybe that's something that will be easier because if someone applies for a door-to-door license, we could have that out there on the permitting portal and someone could just go put their information in and see whether or not they are licensed to go around door-to-door. I think that the other thing that we have to look at is what are we licensing them for? You know, do we, do they just have to get a license? Are we looking at what they're doing or who they are? Are we telling people no with licenses? I think that there are a lot of things we would have to consider. But at this point, we, we are not including personal solar. The recommendation from the planning commission, when they made the move towards ban, looking at a ban, is they wanted to pull personal wind and solar out of that. So if you wanted to put your own personal wind turbine up, you could. It would just be obviously a much smaller scale. It would be lower in height. But there are people who have wind turbines, just like they do solar panels for their homes.
So I believe Cedric County has a very similar regulation to that. And I know that you haven't been doing this too long. But I guess I, when we're talking about a moratorium, and I've expressed this to you before, but I think a moratorium is kind of a waste of time. It's doing something to say that you're not going to do anything until you decide to do something. And I would prefer that we would just skip those first two steps and just go towards the regulations. I think a moratorium would be a waste of everyone's time when these regulations are in place in counties all over Kansas, all over the nation. We're not reinventing the wheel. We shouldn't be.
Nope.
And the time that it's going to take us to get a moratorium in place, we might as well just do the regs, in my opinion. And so I think we should probably, I mean, I know that there are even companies that will write your regs for you if that's what it takes. Because I know that your staff time is pretty valuable. You're a relatively small department. But at the same time, I feel like we need to probably just pick some language from another place that's a similar community to ours and just take that to the planning commission and tell them to vote on it or not.
Well, but Commissioner Mays, why do a moratorium at all if that's our position? If we don't have any regulations in place, and our counselor can correct me if I'm wrong, wouldn't we just go to the golden standard? And then it, everything, by having no regulations in place, it 100% comes down to us three as the commissioners on what we want to do. And we would have the ability to scale to what we think best fits our community based upon the golden standards.
That's precisely what I was saying, though, is we shouldn't do a moratorium.
Yeah, you're, you're both kind of agreeing on one another. The only thing I would add is that, Commissioner Cook, you're right. We go to a strict golden analysis. The difference, though, is if we have standards in place, then the solar companies have a chance to look, oh, well, they have 100 foot set back here. There's a 500 set back here. Landscaping requirements are this. And they would have a better idea of what their costs would be before they ever filed their permit.
I agree. Yeah. And I think that we absolutely 100% could continue to move forward with life as normal, no wind regulations, no solar regulations, no moratoriums, no bans. At no point in time is there any requirement that we consider that. We are a zoned county that allows us to implement things based on a conditional use permit. The whole move towards putting regulations in place or looking at regulations was based on the solar farms that we considered and the concern from the planning commission about their knowledge and their ability to put proper conditions on those. And so the benefit of having regulations there are not to say, hey, everybody, we want you to come to us. We want solar. We want wind. It is instead, just like with any of our other regulations, hey, we have them set out so that if and when it does happen, that we know what we're doing and that the research has been done and we can do so in a fast and efficient manner and not have to scramble on our feet. I, you and I have talked multiple times about the moratorium and I don't disagree. I don't know that I know that a moratorium is necessary. That's the move that the planning commission has pushed for. And I will say that those commissioners, just probably as you, have received calls from people who all are pushing for a moratorium because they're fearful that we won't know what to do if it came forward. I personally am not too worried about it. I wasn't worried about it even when we did the original solar farms. However, at the time that we did the original solar farms, I had been on the job like a week. And those solar farms were ready to go to public hearing the next week. And so it was, it was difficult coming in, not having a good grasp of what was happening. Now, we have a whole lot of information about what we would want and not want. And I think that we, if an application came in, we would know how to handle that in a very efficient manner. And it's not just my office. The county councilor's office is there to support us and to review those and to help us with the regulations. And I know that, you know, you ask why not have a company do it? And I think that my, my point to that being that a lot of these regulations are out there. I have communicated with Harvey County and Sedgwick County just within the last couple of months and weeks to say, hey, what process did you take? How did this happen? Why did you end up where you're at? Because both Harvey County and Sedgwick County have a ban against wind and they have solar regulations that are allowable, but only to a certain degree. They don't want the big utility scale ones. And I think Sedgwick County actually got an application for a larger scale solar farm after they approved their solar regulations. And they have once again put it on hold and said, nope, we're not going to consider this right now. We need to go back and look and see whether or not a utility scale solar farm is appropriate for our county. And some of the things that they looked at, both Harvey County and Sedgwick County, are things that are identical for Shawnee County. What does our flood plain look like? What do our airports look like? How dense is our county? If you look out around our county, we don't have hundreds of acres of farm ground or empty space for wind turbines to go without really affecting a high number of people. And without those wind companies having to enter into leases with a lot of homeowners or a lot, a lot of property owners. We are very dense. We are a, you know, very urban rural county. You know, when you look at our comprehensive plan, we look at whether or not, our goal with the comprehensive plan, kind of the underlying goal was to remain agricultural. But in the grand scheme of things, we're not an ag county like any of the rural counties. We're ag to the tune of what people will do within our county. But a lot of people who live out in Shawnee County have five acres, 10 acres, 20 acres. They want their piece of the country space without the farm ground. And so they don't have farm ground. And we would be fighting a whole lot of homeowners who are not interested in seeing wind farms or solar farms. But that just deflects back to the original conversation. And so, you know, to the point, could we hire a company to write them? Yes, we could. My concern being that people don't really know Shawnee County in the sense of that we do. And maybe it's more so my inability to give up control over a certain level of work and feeling as though that within our own county, we have the special, special ability to write the regulations, but we don't have to reinvent the wheel because there are so many regulations around us that we can literally look at five or six different sets and pick the clauses from each of those that fit our county without paying someone to do it. And, I mean, could we? Yes. And if it comes to that, we can. But I don't feel like, in my opinion, a moratorium is not absolutely necessary to get to that point. I agree with you. It will take us a little bit of time. And so could I have regulations ready to go by March or April? No, because our focus is right now, are we going to ban wind? The solar, we're kind, the way that I've approached this is at first, we were coming in and we were going to do both wind and solar at the same time. You know, they kind of ride side by side. And so let's put them out there and do it together. But as we've done the survey, as we've done the presentations, it's very clear that wind and solar are not the same. And the way that people feel within Shawnee County is not the same about wind and solar. And so instead of dragging the wind portion of it out, let's get that taken care of. Let's get, if, you know, if the ban is what the people want, then let's work towards proposing that ban and seeing if that's how the planning commission and the Board of County Commissioners really feel about wind. And then hold off on solar and start developing those regulations at the level that we really want to see solar in Shawnee County, if we want to see solar. And the way that I've seen it going is that I can see us allowing solar because that's kind of what people seem to be willing to commit to at this point. Maybe not big ones, but smaller garden solar farms. And wind, we see a lot more animosity compared to what we do with solar.
Commissioner Mays?
And I think that's a good idea, segmenting the two. I mean, doing, doing the wind separately from solar, I think is a smart idea. I guess they've spent, the planning commission has spent the last two months talking about a moratorium. When they, had they spent that two months talking about the regs, I think we'd be in a much better position now instead. They, I just feel like spending time saying that we need more time doesn't, it's just redundant. And so, I, I mean, I don't necessarily think that the planning commission ought to be writing regs either. I think it'd be better if, if your department proposed regs to them and then they can amend them or turn them down or accept them or whatever. But I mean, the purpose of the planning commission isn't to start from square one.
Correct.
Typically, somebody has a project. It's presented to them for approval. And I feel like the planning commission right now, their role is a little bit confusing in this because it seems like they're trying to write the regs, which isn't necessarily, in my opinion at least, where they should be.
I would be a little bit hesitant letting wind energy companies write my regs. I mean, it might be good to see what they propose.
That's not what I say.
We're talking about solar.
Our solar, yeah, either way.
I'm not saying let the solar companies either. I'm saying our, our planning department.
It did sound just a little bit like, I understand where Bill's coming from because I had that same thought. And my response to that was going to be, about a year ago, I would have loved to have wrote your quarry regulations.
I'm sorry. I was not, I was not insinuating. I was not insinuating that the solar companies write our solar regs.
Yes, and so the, you know, there are, I am aware of at least one company who's been pushing within our area to do it. I haven't been able to tell. The only county that I'm aware that they have worked at, and granted, I haven't spent a lot of time looking at this one in particular, but they did work with Kingman County, and Kingman County is very pro-wind and solar. And the company that wrote those regs or assisted with them were moving very hardcore at bringing those regs in to allow it because that's what that county wanted. I don't, it's hard to tell from that company whether or not they have backing from the Energy Alliance or if it would be, the regs be written from the energy perspective versus the other way around. I would like to think that we could do, you know, the most independent job possible. And I have been working very closely with Kyle Edelman in the county councilor's office. He's been side by side with me, working on, you know, looking at the various legal topics, what are the pros and cons, and he will absolutely be helping me as we write those. And I have intent of putting those together and, you know, working with him to find what the best solution is. I 100% agree that the planning commission should not be writing them. They should be looking at them and reviewing them, but to the other sense of that, I want them to be 100% invested in the decision that they're making and not just stamping off on something. They need to understand and know what it is that we're doing because they're, I'm not the one approving it. They are the ones reviewing it and voting on it to make a recommendation to you, and my recommendation is just kind of the icing on the cake on top of that in terms of, you know, my feelings towards what we should do.
I have one last road to travel down. What benefits, what benefits are there for Shawnee County if we let wind and solar in? Do we get tax dollars, or does it all just get shipped out to some other state? Does it reduce our power bills or?
A little of all of that. We've had, we've had a union reach out to us and say, hey, we're in favor of wind and solar because our company, which comes from people that work around here, are the workers who would be working on it. So it gives them, you know, there's the potential that jobs are out there, that people can come in and do the work. It does, so the wind and solar energy does get joined into the big grid and shipped off, and we have no ability to control and say, you need to keep it here because that can be a violation of law. We do have to allow it to go other places, but it does support our community and our people because it does give some level of a reduction of energy costs at some point. Now, there are arguments both ways because you have to pay to put the infrastructure in, you have to pay people to come in and do it. So of course, there's a cost, but there are also a lot of subsidies on the federal level for people to come and put these wind and solar farms in. As you guys are probably well aware, there are also exemptions from taxes for state taxes on wind and solar, but those then equate to us coming in and asking for additional money. So you can ask for a payment in lieu of taxes, and that is a free-for-all. We can put any requirement out there that we want. Could you ask for a million dollars a year? Could you ask for five, 10? Possibly. It also supports some of our landowners. Some of our landowners, any of the farmers who may be struggling and aren't able to farm their ground for any reason or another, if they allow a lease on their property, they get paid large amounts of money. And so they, you know, it supports our landowners as well. And so when you're looking at the competing interests of the landowners, some of them don't want a wind or a solar farm near them because they don't want to see them, but at the same token, there are farmers and landowners who are receiving benefit because they're getting paid money for their farm ground. And I've been in communication with at least one farmer who is highly in favor of wind farms because they can continue to farm their ground or to run their cattle or to graze at the same time getting money to allow the wind turbine to be placed on their land. And so there is a benefit to the county in the sense that you could get money for that payment in lieu of taxes. That's a 10-year exemption that they receive, and so after those 10 years, then they would have to pay property tax at that point unless the law changes before then. We don't really know what a wind farm value would look at, you know, does it increase your property value? Does it decrease? You know, how do they value the structure itself? I think it's a little more difficult to tell what the value of a wind farm may be in terms of an assessment or an evaluation.
It probably depends on who you ask also.
Yeah.
There are some people that think it's pretty awesome, and there's some other people that think it's pretty terrible. So, I mean, nobody seems to be in the middle on wind farms. I think solar, though, the one thing, there is a benefit to us, I think, as a society is the reliability of our electrical grid in the summertime, that when everybody is cranking their air conditioners on a 100-degree day, the solar backs up the nuclear and coal plants, which provide that base load, but they don't ramp it up and down on a quick basis, and the solar steps up on a hot day to kind of provide that extra boost of energy that we need. And so when you see Texas and California and some of these other places that have, you know, moved to a different, that have all these rolling brownouts and things like that, I think that's something that reliability and just honestly keeping a modern electrical grid is very important, I think, to the functionality of our society.
Yes, and that would be a reason also to have, if you were to have wind and solar, I think allowing the battery storage would be a huge benefit as well because the battery storage allows that energy to be maintained right there. And so when you do have the highs and the lows, it takes that battery or the energy that's been stored and just allows it to function in without a whole lot of extra maneuvering. So they like to keep those battery storage facilities close to the wind and solar if possible because it allows them to take energy from multiple sources depending on if you have a really hot day, a really cold day, and it helps balance it out across as a whole.
How long do these batteries hold up? Do you have any idea?
I have no idea. Yeah, I don't know enough about that. I would also like to mention that there's been a lot of talk historically, which got the planning commission meetings a little more interesting, that there are some leases out there, and we can affirm that there are land leases in Shawnee County, especially in the southern portion, there are some. I did receive contact from one of the companies who has some of those leases out there that they were able to say, yes, we do have leases on a few parcels of land. I would point out that they indicated those leases have been in place since about 2017. So this is not something that has come up within the last year or so because we're doing this. We're not doing this because of them or the other way around. What we have to recognize is that there was a big push for wind and solar in Osage County, and so as close as we are to Osage County, especially the area south of Auburn, is, they border. And so if a wind farm were to go in in Osage County, there probably would be some spillover into Shawnee County. And so those wind farm companies recognize that and start reaching out to people within our community for leases, and those leases have been in place for an extended period of time. They do do research in regards to wind conditions. Does it mean that we're going to have a wind farm coming to Shawnee County? Well, we don't know what their plans are, and I'm not going to say that I'm ignorant to say, well, no, they're not going to come here. You know, they have leases, there's always the potential. We knew that that was the case, but the information that we've been told is that they're not particularly interested in Shawnee County other than for the purposes of any spillover or research in regards to what they really want, which was the wind farm in Osage County.
Commissioner Mays?
Well, as much as I love talking about wind and solar, I'd like to change the subject if you don't mind.
Sure.
We hear a lot about residential developments and how there's a housing shortage, and we had talked about, you know, accessory dwelling units outside the city limits, perhaps in like RR1, where, you know, you're kind of close to the city but not quite. Are we working on any kind of, I mean, obviously, we need more housing in Shawnee County. It seems that we're having a hard time getting people to build with any density at least. And so, I mean, are we doing things at the county level to try and encourage development? Or, I mean, I know the city's got their land bank that they just started, and they're, I think, pushing more for infill stuff, but, you know, outside the city, I mean, what are we doing?
That's a loaded question. So we have, I think that you can look at this in several respects. The first is that in the locations by which we have the ability to develop, we being the county, the higher density would most likely fall closer to the city because that is where you have the ability to connect to city water or, you know, a rural water district, you have the ability to connect to sewer. Once you move away from those higher-density areas, then you're looking at larger-scale properties at a less dense build because you have to have septics, you have to have alternative methods of connecting and ridding yourself of your wastewater. And then at that point, then we have to look at what are the right size of parcel for a property that has to have rural water or sometimes a well and a septic system. And so those, typically, you want to keep them closer to the three-acre size. Anything smaller than that, the risk is that you may have a new septic system go in, it can fit there, but at some point, that septic system is going to get old and not be able to support or needs to be rehabbed, and so you have to have additional land to move to put a new septic system in. And so if you have smaller parcels, you're running out of space in terms of our setbacks and the location towards your water source as well. So there's multiple things that Shawnee County could do, first being, we can, we have worked and we've worked towards our zoning regulations and considering things like tiny homes, accessory dwelling units, allowing for more homes to be placed on a single parcel. Right now, you can only have one home on one parcel, and that limits a lot of people in regards to development of their land. There's a very specific reason we do that, and it, you know, at some point, is having multiple homes on one parcel too much, probably. It really affects the septic system itself as well. And so it all comes back to, we have to work between my department and environmental health on what is an appropriate level of development and what those septic systems can handle before it just becomes too much.
What's considered a parcel? Is there a minimum or maximum size for a parcel?
We, well, so that's also kind of a loaded question. Are, if you aren't three acres and 200 feet of frontage, then you have to plat. In unincorporated county, there are parcels all over that are more than three acres, more than 200 feet, less than, could they divide them into more? Yes. We also have a lot of parcels that are half an acre or three-quarters of an acre, and those are parcels that were divided at some point back in the 50s, the 60s, they have old houses on them. If you want a smaller than three-acre and 200 feet of frontage, you just have to plat it. And at that point, if you plat it, you can do about anything so long as you can get your water and your wastewater. And in working with environmental health, their preference would be that you're closer to the three acre, just for the reason that I said, with ensuring that you have room for your septic and your well. But can you do it on two acres? Can you do it on one acre? Absolutely. But in regards to how can we do more, I think we've also discussed the three mile. The three mile is difficult for us to develop within the three mile. We only have so much control over what we can allow people in the unincorporated county do within the three mile because if the parcel's not a new, if the parcel's a new parcel, you may have to plat. If it needs to connect to city water or sewer, it has to plat. And so we have to work with the city in regards to our ability to develop within that area. And then at that level, they also have, they have bigger frontage requirements. They require at least 300 feet. They have a width-to-depth requirement that prevents some parcels from being created. And then they also have an 80/20 development rule where if you have a parcel, you can only develop 20% of that parcel. And so if we've had some subdivisions, we've had multiple subdivisions come to us, I would say four, that I can think of off the top of my head, where they want to do development and the development that they wanted to do wasn't going to conform with the city's rules, and so they walked away and didn't develop.
Are there parts of the city that has been denied for access, connection to the sewer and water for development?
Yes, yes, there are places where they are not expanding. They, so their water and sewer, they're willing to do connectivity within their urban growth area, and there are specific tier levels that they look at. So if you're closest to the city, the chance of you being able to connect to sewer is greater, but at the same time, you have to consent to annexation. Maybe you won't annex right then, but you have to consent to an annexation in the future. There are rules that you have to comply with that will allow them to allow you to connect.
And so those are areas outside of the city limits in the county, but within the three mile where people would like to develop but are restricted from development?
Correct, for a variety of reasons. Either they need to be able to connect to city water or sewer and they can't, and then there are rules about how close you have to be to be able to do a septic where we may require them to. Can they get a wastewater waiver from the city? Yes, and the city has granted wastewater waivers to people who don't then have to connect to the sewer, they allow them to connect to a septic, but it takes an additional process through the city. And then again, the 80/20 development rule has prevented a lot of development from happening because their policy and their push is for infill and not high-density development outside the city limits.
So the long-range use plan adopted by the city has actually hindered a lot of development within that three-mile area?
Absolutely.
Would it be beneficial if we reduced that to, say, a mile or whatever the growth area that the city is concerned with? Might be a mile and a half on this side, but maybe less than a mile on the other side.
My, yes, my preference would be in looking at it is that we would not look at a specific distance from the city limits. I think we need to look at areas. Where is it that they really anticipate that they're willing to grow or plan to grow? And they have an urban growth area that they've identified. They, you know, I'm sure that they have an idea about where they would continue to grow even beyond that. There are specific areas where they, within the three mile, that they have no interest in developing ever, and so we need to have a specific conversation with them about what they're willing to do and, you know, if they really are interested within keeping that three mile.
Commissioner Mays?
I think she answered the question I was going to ask, so.
Commissioner Rippon?
I think I'm done.
On the three-mile discussion, I would just point out to keep your eye out because there is, once again, legislation to eliminate the three mile altogether. The last I looked, there was a hearing on that February 8th. I don't know whether that will go anywhere. I think, you know, my personal opinion is, is I would prefer to be able to work with the city to discuss what we want and what works best for Shawnee County. I don't think that what works best for Shawnee County is what works best for Waukesha County, Harvey County, Sedgwick County. I think every county is different. Do I think that the three mile is too much in our community? Yes, and it has been very frustrating for our developers and our department.
Commissioner Mays?
Now, I'll say something. I think the other thing is that the three-mile radius is confusing to a lot of people. The argument that I hear from people in the three-mile radius is that they, you know, feel like they're not getting the representation that they want from, you know, their tax dollars and that they're, you know, not, they don't get to vote in the city elections, yet the city of Topeka is regulating what they can and can't do. And so that's a piece of it, I think, for a lot of people. But also, I think that it's just, as the city kind of moves, it's hard to know what is three miles, you know? Where does that three-mile limit stop? Where if, I feel like if what you had said earlier- Where if, I feel like if, what you had said earlier, if we have more of a defined boundary, it'd be a lot easier for people to know when they're in that growth zone, and then they can make their real estate decisions based on that, rather than, you know, I bought a house here, it was not in the three-mile radius, but then they annexed a couple blocks out, and now I am in the three mile. I mean, it just, I think, is a little confusing to the average property owner in Shawnee County. And so, you know, I don't know if doing away with it entirely, but certainly it needs to be changed, in my opinion.
I can see the purpose of having regulating growth immediately connected to the city, but the radius is terrible because what we really need is roads.
Correct.
To define, or maybe a river or something like that. But it's my understanding, if that arch, or that circumference, if it even touches a property, then that whole property is under their.
Um, not necessarily. We look at it more to the sense, in the city and the county, I want to be very clear that I work with the city frequently, every day, every week. And this has nothing to do with whether or not we are working together. We absolutely do the best that we can with the parameters that we're given. And in that circumstance, if the three mile hits a property, we look in general about what level it's within the three mile or not. If it falls mostly within the three mile, it really makes sense for them to handle it. If it mostly falls within the county, then we try and take it over, and we work together in that regard. So if a little corner of it hits, no, they don't take the whole property. But there, I mean, there is one specific subdivision that has been at play for years that falls mostly in the three mile, and they, you know, if that radius would change just a little bit, they would be on our side, and their ability to develop would be very different. But roads, specific roads, I think, are key because it is very confusing. And I'm not, I always thought that the three mile extended every time an annexation happened, and I think in general, it should and it could, but I don't know that the boundary that they have set has actually changed recently. In general, it should continue to expand every time you annex because the way the law reads is that it is three miles from the city. But what we show on our GIS and what they show on their GIS, I don't know that they've actually changed those boundaries for a period of time.
Good to know.
Well, it is a little bit confusing, but they quit, the city doesn't call it a three-mile area anymore. They call it their ETJ, the Extraterritorial Jurisdiction. And underneath statute, you, the city can actually bring that in. They don't have to be at three miles, they can say two miles, or they can say one mile. And then they went to service areas, service area one, service area two, and they have different rules for each of those service areas. But I do know that they have maps online, I'm looking at one now, that explains how all that, well, it doesn't really explain, it just tells you what it looks like.
It will take some work in working with the city. And, you know, we've done some conversations with them, but I think at this stage, we have new city council, we have a different city manager, interim city manager, there's a different director of planning and development over there. I think that if it's, if the county is ready to start those conversations, then absolutely, let's go ahead and set the time in the meeting to have those conversations. Because it's, you know, the other, the only other option would be to create a joint board that regulates within that three-mile area. But again, you have to have different city policy. Ultimately, the policies have to align for it to work for us to be able to do what we need to do within the county. And my preference would be to minimize the three mile and make it much smaller. I don't prefer to have another board overseeing something because that's just another level of bureaucracy that you have to go through.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Absolutely, thank you.
Our next item is public comment, if there is any public comment. Seeing none, administrative comment. Commissioner Mays?
I just want to thank Joni for coming here today. I'm always impressed at how much you know when you're citing 250 feet setbacks and all this stuff, how much you can remember. It's impressive. But thank you, I know this was a long conversation. And then also, I wanted to congratulate the Kansas City Chiefs for making it to the Super Bowl. Pretty impressive.
Agreed. So next Monday, our work session will be emergency management and also discussion of emergency services as it relates to Shawnee County. So that will be our work session next Monday. Commissioner Rippon, anything?
Tab, welcome aboard. Good to have you.
Will AMR be here for that at all?
Huh?
Is AMR going to be here for that?
Yes, anticipating. Okay. Okay. All right, having nothing else, we're adjourned until Thursday.